We call the Fitchburg School Committee meeting to order. At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Kragan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Happily. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kragan.
You are very welcome.
School committee members, students report. No chair report. The mayor is not here with us tonight. Resource Committee, school building needs, no report. Policy Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Nothing. Student Support?
Well, members of the Student Support Committee attended the Board of Health meeting. I don't know if Superintendent Jokel is going to talk about that at all.
Steve Curry has been invited to attend tonight. I expect him to be here.
And I know, you know, Jim maybe could speak to that as well. So, I don't know if we want to do that here and now or wait.
I think we should wait until Curry arrives.
Curry arrives.
Yep. So, that was really the only student support issue.
Okay. School personnel, nothing. There will be something on the agenda later. Executive Committee, nothing to report. Student reps, nothing to report. Do we have an approval of the minutes of the June 21st meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we are going to go into executive session and will return after executive session. Ms. Greenleys, could you call the members? Where would you like to be, Steve?
I guess you can. The podium is as good a place as any.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Welcome back to the Fitchburg School Committee. And welcome, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. Thank you, School Committee.
So, thanks for coming, Steve. Appreciate it. As you know, we've been in regular contact over the last year and a half. And as we have done over the last year and a half, look at all different data sources and guidance from, you know, state bodies, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and also the Department of Public Health, who with DESI issued some joint guidance recently for all school districts in Massachusetts. As you know, Massachusetts is a local control state. The Board of Health had a meeting last Thursday afternoon, I think, just to, you know, talk about where Fitchburg was at. And I know if you want to just kind of cut to the chase and talk about what was discussed at the Board of Health meeting as it was your meeting and what, I guess, order or resolution was recommended passed, I don't know what language you use. So, I know a couple of School Committee members were available for that meeting. So, if you can just kind of start off there and I think maybe after that, we have the state-level DPH metrics, as Fitchburg is one of the gateway cities that are tracking. So, the information is publicly available and we can just share that with the School Committee and by FATV, the community at large, and talk about what we're planning to do next to try to address some of those issues. Does that sound like a plan?
So, I'll start with the Board of Health meeting, which occurred last Thursday evening. We discussed the cases and at the time, the amount of cases we had put us into the substantial transmission range, according to the CDC, which was about 30 to 35 cases at the time. But since that time, we are now have escalated to a higher transmission community. We have about 54 cases as of this morning. So, the cases are rising. So, in the meeting, the Board did feel and had some concerns that CDC does recommend schools, attendees, students, staff, to wear a mask when they are indoors. It's not quite clear about the eating, the lunchtime requirement. So, that's probably something we should be discussing in the near future. But in short, everybody in school should be wearing a mask and that would be effective August 23rd, which I believe is next Monday. And that also, in that order, will also include municipal buildings, not just the schools.
So, August 23rd is in two weeks.
23rd is two weeks. Correct. Thank you. I know there has been questions, how and when does the mask mandate or order, so to speak, end? I think the Board's answer to that was to regularly review the cases, take a nicer, closer look at the cases and try to get an idea where they're coming from. And if things are looking strong and there are no clusters or super spreaders out there, then the mask order would come down. So, the Board currently meets on a monthly basis, but they would meet, obviously, if there were urgent need before that and have met quite often in the last year and a half. Yeah, questions would help me give a little direction on where to go with this.
Yeah, absolutely, Steve. So, I, after attending the Board of Health meeting remotely, feel a sense of urgency that adds up to the following, like, the following, I guess, what would we call it? We would call it sort of factors. So, one factor is 60% of our schoolchildren can't get vaccinated because they're under 12. The next factor is that we're three weeks till school opens. The other factor is Fitchburg is 10 points below the state average and that Latinx population is, you know, points below. And the final factor is DESI is forbidding and not allowing us to do distance learning. And I am so glad that, you know, you and the department have put together, you know, the clinics and the awareness. And I feel that all of us in the community really need to work together to urge people who have not been vaccinated to be vaccinated. There's a very, sort of, there's an email that I'm sharing with some folks, including Francisco Ramos of NewView, and we're looking, we're hoping to do a Saturday vaccine clinic that would be like 4:00 to 7:00. And, you know, finding the right location. So, we're, and that would be a Saturday because several folks who do work with our, you know, Spanish-speaking friends said that, you know, that people work. I mean, they have very long and lengthy, you know, hours, like, on the job. So, if we were to offer, like, Saturday, late afternoon, you know, early evening, along with a coordinated messaging. Because the coordinated messaging is really key. I was listening to the radio recently and a British correspondent said, yes, you know, Britain's doing about as badly as the United States, but in the United States, it's because the vaccine got politicized. And in Britain, it's because people are lazy. And I thought, well, that's an interesting take on the situation. But I think that the politicization is heinous and wrong and very dangerous, not potentially dangerous, but right now, very dangerous. And that's why I'm wearing my mask. I've been vaccinated, couldn't wait to get vaccinated, you know, but I'm wearing my mask because I, I'm concerned. So, another vaccine clinic on August 21st is something that a group of us are looking at and, you know, communicating with email with you and just putting those pieces together is something I think, I know needs to happen so that we have a safe opening day and the next month in school is, you know, is predictable versus unpredictable.
So, as part of our ongoing conversations, Steve Curry has helped organize a, we had a mobile vaccination clinic last Tuesday where 21 individuals, it could be students and/or some family members, were vaccinated. And I've shared with Steve the proposed schedule of welcome-back events, whether they be ice cream socials at each schools or, you know, there might be a food truck at one school. I can't remember if that's finalized yet. But we're looking at having welcome-back events and Steve and I, we haven't finalized if vaccine clinics are available on those dates. And also, you know, the August 21 date that Sally is talking about, clearly, the best defense on COVID is vaccination, right? So, given that our vaccination, I think, for a second shot in Fitchburg is about, I don't know, about 47, 48%, and the state average is, I think, 14 points higher, we have, you know, we have some ground to catch up on here. And I think with people coming back to school, having the easier access, and so whether it's on a Saturday or when an event is at the school, we saw from the springtime, we were able to have with the mobile vax bus, I think, 300 students and/or family members in one day. So, if we could, you know, replicate those counts and along with, I've spoken with Mr. Curry and I think also with Sally about doing a public service announcement in English and in Spanish to the community by various members of either city leadership, school leadership, and health officials to, the vaccine is safe. Here's how you can get it.
That's a very important part.
And in addition, vaccines are also available here at the local pharmacies and also at the community health center. So, just to bring Sally.
So, I do have a lengthy list of school events that are coming up. I'm also working on some of the city events, community events that are going on.
Fantastic.
So, the larger events, I'm trying to tackle a vax bus and for the smaller events, we'll try to either put a local nursing crew together or see if we can get some of the local community health centers or any assistance out there from MRCs to do some sort of clinics to cover all those events. So, I appreciate, it's very helpful to know where people are congregating, where the groups are, and it helps me tremendously to be able to put a clinic together. So, thank you.
You're welcome. August 21st, again, we've got a group of folks who are willing to do canvassing in the neighborhood, which means going and knocking on doors, which I've been doing a lot of lately anyway, and just having these conversations. And I can also say that every single time that we have a clinic, we'll bring some therapy pets down there. So, if people are feeling a little bit, you know, on edge or anxious, it's an anxious kind of century, I'd say, there will be some nice therapy pets to visit with. So, that's an added attraction. And if we need to have music or something, then that's something that the arts organizations and Fitchburg Cultural Alliance and other, we can work on that, too, to make it a party, to make it, you know, a fun and festive occasion, as all the back-to-school occasions are as well. So, you'll get an email from probably me and Francisco because we're looking for the low field that neighborhood. And we'll do a lot of advance work and just get that word loud and clear and neon and friendly font, so.
I'd just like to, go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim. I think Gene was going to end up first.
Steve, can you give us any information about the 54 cases? Are these, like, people who have been vaccinated? Are they young? Are they old? Are there nursing homes? Are there, like, are they breakthrough? Do you have an idea of any of that?
So, the breakthrough cases are not really easy to access. We, I have run across a couple. We've had some in City Hall. So, I know it's out there. The issue is the virtual network that reports communicable diseases only reports Fitchburg residents to me. So, not all of the cases are Fitchburg residents.
Right.
So, that's how it's been discovered. However, we have had some, I believe, just two cases of the variant. So, it's in the community. And these cases were confirmed cases in late July, at the end of July. So, the variant is in the community and I'm hoping, and it sounds awful, but I'm hoping that the variant throws a little encouragement into the community to get vaccinated because, like Superintendent says, our vaccination rate is around 47% and the state is in the mid-60s. So, we do lag behind.
How has that information been publicized so far, that that variant, the first case of the variants is in the city? Has that been?
Can you speak up a little?
The fact that the variant has been in the city now, has that been released to the public or how has that information been published?
It hasn't been published. I just discovered that within the last couple of days.
Understood.
So, maybe a press release including that information is, you bring up an important point.
Absolutely could be. And while I have the mic, I just wanted to add to what Sally was saying earlier. I think canvassing is going to be, you know, imperative, as uneasy as it does make me feel personally, it is going to be imperative because it's going to get to a point where it's not about convenience with the vaccinations, where it's not about people not getting a vaccine because it hasn't been convenient so far, it's just that they're undecided. And I think getting the right information out is just going to be imperative. And if it's going to have to be door-to-door, then so be it. But I think that the fact that the variant is in the city, press release is probably appropriate.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah. I, sorry, I jumped in. Wow, that's, that's big news.
Yes, it is.
That's big, big news. And again, amplifies the urgency.
Mm-hmm.
I know Jim and Gene had their hands up as well. Sorry, I'm in the way.
So, you're talking about, I was thinking the same thing about school activities. Obviously, Fitchburg High football games would be an opportunity to reach a lot of people. Related to that, is it possible to contact St. Bernice to see if they would be willing to have a vaccination site set up when they have home football games? Is that possible?
Sure. I was in.
So that more people in the city are able to have an opportunity to receive the vaccine? I don't, I know that not every student at St. Bernice is from Fitchburg. I think it's a very small number, but there are alum who come and it's just an opportunity to, more work for you to coordinate. But my second point is, starting on the 23rd, all municipal buildings will require everybody in the building or coming into the building have to wear a mask. Do we need to pass a motion that also says that everybody on a bus has to wear a mask?
It's already.
Already. That's what we already have.
Already, it's okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Transportation is already covered by the Department of Public Health order.
Okay, good, good. Okay.
I was, I looked at some of the legal guidance that you sent, Bob, and so, I guess I have a question about where we might be going in terms of asking for status of, whether it's understanding what our teachers' status is for vaccination. There's that question. I'm just curious if that's come up in any of the discussions. The other point that I wanted to make is that I think all of us were on a few emails by people who reached out who are very much opposed to the vaccine and quite angry with administrators and teachers who talked about the vaccine. And as I, and obviously, we, I'm so thrilled to think that we're going to have a presence and an opportunity to have people vaccinated throughout all of these events. But just in terms of, like, protecting the staff who talk about those events and are doing the right thing and trying to raise that awareness, I just, I know that there is a faction of the population that is quite angry about that. So, I wonder, you know, if we need to be putting anything in place about telling people how they communicate this information or where it can be posted or who can be talking about, you know, like, I wish we weren't having that conversation, but I know that it exists. So, if anybody could speak to those two things, the, are we asking people for their status? It's not an approved, still, really not an approved vaccine, right? FDA approval is just emergency use still. So, I don't, I don't know. Anybody can jump in on those.
I was just going to ask the same question, just to, like, kind of clarify that same question, was do we have any mandates for the staff or do we have any updates or data about their status?
We, so, let me try to answer questions in reverse order. So, we have not had any mandates. We have worked with all our units and really all our employees over the spring to increase vaccination. We hosted a vaccination clinic at Memorial and we also made available slots to employees up in Gardner, as Gardner was generous with their supply. And I think on two dates, Fitchburg public school staff were able to get dates there. I would say, an informal estimate is it's probably between 70 and 85% of staff are vaccinated. I don't have, we don't have any hard data on, we haven't asked people for their vaccination cards. You know, I think, just, and I'm just repeating what's in the news, but it appears that the FDA may be trying to review the full authorization of the vaccine in early September, which would allow, I'll say, as I understand it, more employers to mandate vaccinations because of this emergency order. So, I think regardless, I guess I'll say what, you know, Mr. Curry said, that from a health perspective, the best line of defense and protection for oneself, one family, and one's community is, is the vaccination. And we are going to make it available on self-real occasions to anyone who wants it because the health and safety of our students, our families, and our staff is the number one concern. And our rate needs to be improved. So, we're going to do whatever we can and we'll work with whoever we need to try to increase that rate to build a stronger and healthier community.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Curry?
How many people are hospitalized right now, Steve?
Not many cases, just a, just a couple. And I, I don't think we have seen a death, fortunately, since about May, end of May.
Great.
So, I hope that's a good sign that. Things aren't getting totally bad, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Just one final, I've got my email here. Steve, thank you so much for coming in and for, you know, answering our questions and reporting to the public as well. I think that the coordinated messaging, we're, you know, we're going to get there very, very quickly to renew that. And I'm sending the email that'll have Francisco and a bunch of other folks looking, looking to take those steps to do low, low playground for Saturday, August 21st. So, the public should just wait until they get the officials. And just a reminder, the DPW sign is an awesome thing that can tell people, vax clinic, low playground, you know, vax clinic, Fitchburg High School, that is such a useful sign. Everybody sees that and we have two of them. So, thank, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. I just wanted to say one real quick comment. DPH has issued some canvassers out in the city. I don't know if you folks are familiar with that, but there are people going knocking on doors and handing out flyers for future clinics. Excuse me. Some of those reports are showing there is still a desire to get the vaccination.
Right.
So, in addition to the school clinics, and I appreciate any, any assistance, and I know Sally, you've been working hard in the last couple of days, so I'll be reaching out to you shortly.
Thank you.
But any assistance on, you know, getting the education into the schools about the vaccine, the parents, whatever it takes to get that information out there. But the community is showing a desire to have the, have the vaccination. Why they didn't come to their clinics, I, I don't know. I can't explain it, but we are going to put people on the ground with the canvassers to see what their money, where their mouth is, to see if it's, they're not just telling the canvassers yes to make them go away, more or less. So, hopefully, that will improve our vaccination rate as well.
Just a, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it anyway. Does anybody from the Sentinel and Enterprise ever contact you to ask about what's going on or?
Yeah, I get questions now and then, but I got to be honest, I haven't seen any of the articles in the Sentinel, so I don't know what that's all about.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I talk to the media quite often.
Okay.
Why they're not making it there, I don't have an answer to.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Steve, when will the Board of Health resolution order, when will you have something in writing that you can share with, you know, with the school department?
I would think we'll see something as early as tomorrow. It's in Legal's hands right now, reviewing the language. I would think it's pretty straightforward. It wouldn't be a large monumental task to review, so I think we'll see something as early as tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Communications?
I have one.
Go ahead, Sally.
Thanks. I always have one. I don't, I don't see on the agenda that we're talking about the Fitchburg summer program, but it was fantastic. And I feel like by the, you know, by our next School Committee meeting, we should hear about the, you know, the field trips kids took, the academics that they did, some, we got some wonderful teachers that were ours and some wonderful teachers that were from, you know, outside the district. And I was just so proud and pleased to visit both B Positive and Tara Sweeney, our STEM Ambassador. Tara did a couple of days and we have a bunch of kids whose postcards are going into space. And B Positive brought therapy pets and kids did flyers to, that I will bring to the schools that will remind folks to go to a shelter and maybe adopt an adult or senior pet and spay and neuter their pets. But there's so much else that was going on, you know, plus a garden that's at South Street. So, that, that was just beautiful and I loved, I loved everything that I saw. It was great, so. The other piece is that Stratton Players is doing a performance based on the Civil War. This is the 160th anniversary of the Battle of Balls Bluff, 1861, October. And we are having tryouts on August 26th, 6:30 PM, location TBD. And this is an original story written by me and we've got a lot of folks involved with it, including the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry, an amazing group of reenactors. We're doing this at Forest Hill Cemetery and the title is Letters From the Front, Fitchburg and the War of the Rebellion. So, that's October 2nd and 3rd, Saturday and Sunday performance. And you can go to strattonplayers.com or email strattonplayers@gmail.com and we're all over, you know, social media. But, you know, there were young men who were educated in our schools, who went off to war and unfortunately, many of them didn't come back and some came back very damaged. And, you know, some came back and they wrote about their experiences. So, this is all based on historical information. Very exciting. And that's it for me.
Okay. Communications?
So, I guess I just want to piggyback Sally on the summer program. I think we had over, how many hundreds of students did we have in total?
Probably four, five, six. Probably about 800.
So, we had 800 and then now, actually, this week at Ryangold, we have an Acceleration Academy with 80 students.
Yep, at Ryangold.
At Ryangold. So, one program ends, another program starts and summer learning continues. So, that's great to see. And then also this week, we have the Fitchburg Police Department holding their 10th Annual Youth Police Academy, where actually, the other day, they did a cleanup project over at Cogswell Park. So, a lot of things going on and a lot of it is being shared with the public on social media, but nevertheless, still deserves special mention, so.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any public comment?
And then I guess just any, Craig, I don't know if there's. I don't know if there are a couple donations, if you want to just. We did not have anybody submit any public comment tonight.
Okay. Superintendent's report, yep.
In executive session summarized the changes to the teacher's contract along with the new calendar as two and a half days of professional development time was added. And the contract is up for ratification on tonight's agendas and action item as is the corresponding calendar. So very brief.
And then, does it make sense to make the motion to accept the contract now or wait and do it separately when we get down to there?
We're just about there.
Okay.
Can I just quickly, before we go there, I just want to make sure the public knows of the changes in the calendar. I know we talked in executive session, but I think it's fair that we say it for the public. So we added two additional professional development days to the calendar. Those are going to be on January 31st and May 2nd, which now pushes the last day of school now to be on Wednesday, June 15th. So again, originally, the calendar that was out said that June, Monday, June 13th was the last day. If the new calendar is accepted tonight and voted upon, school committee, the last day of school now will be Wednesday, June 15th.
Will be posted on our website now?
As soon as it's voted on tonight, it will be posted tomorrow.
We have two donations to be accepted this evening, both from Matthew Knoll, teacher at Rhine Gold, and they're presented to Mr. Mercado. Three scooters were donated. Funding source was Richard C. Knoll, approximate value of $139.28. And that was to reward hard-working students at the end of the year. And then the second one from Mr. Knoll to Rhine Gold as well. Funding source is Craig Powell and Advanced Prototypes and Molding, three bicycles, estimated value of $286.94. And again, these were donated to be rewarded to students who were, did a great job this past school year.
Quickie comment on that. I know Mr. Knoll. I've been in his classroom numerous times with therapy pets. And he is an excellent teacher. And student health is something he really emphasizes. And I saw this donation and thought, wow, that is remarkable generosity. Thank you so much, Mr. Knoll, that's great.
Are you going to do an update on school reopening plans?
That was really the opening with Mr. Currie and, yep.
Okay. All right, then there's no policy items at this time. Action items. 2186, approve the contract between the Pittsburgh School Committee and the Pittsburgh Education Association for a new three-year contract beginning July 1st, 2021, expiring June 30th, 2024.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2187, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the revised FY 2122 school calendar.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2188, approve the donation of three bicycles, estimated value of $286.94 to be given students, hard work, and an opportunity for summer exercise. They will be selected by the staff from Craig Powell and Advanced Prototypes.
Make a motion.
All in favor? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2189, approve the donation of three scooters, estimated value $139.28 to be given to students, hard work, and an opportunity for summer exercise, selected by the staff from Richard C. Knoll, Jr.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've already had an executive session, so there will not be another one. entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice job tonight.
If I can just ask the school committee members who are present to just sign under the school committee.